All right, and. All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order. May 6, 2020. I'm going to call the role of the planning board, and if you were here, please say that you are. John DeLeo.
Here.
Roger Lassard. Not here. Mark Rich.
Here.
McLyles.
Here.
David Burks.
Ah, I'm here.
Nelson Gill.
Here.
And I'm John Fink, Chair. You'll probably see me looking side to side every now and then because I'm sort of surrounded by materials. For the benefit of the public who may wish to participate, members of the public will be connected to the meeting with a view only capability and will be able to utilize the question answer feature of the Zoom webinar to submit comments and questions to the planning board. Planning Board may then choose to address the comments and or unmute the audio connections so you may speak with the board directly. The board will ask each of you to provide your name and street address to ensure that you're an Ellsworth resident. And the connection information for the webinar is posted on the website. Janet and Nate will monitor the questions and comments that come through the Zoom webinar. And Dwight Tilton is also collecting emails and such and will let us know when they come in. If you would like to speak while someone else is speaking during the meeting, please raise your hands with us so that I may see you and call on you. If you are not on video and the Chair cannot see you, you may raise, use the raise hand function on Zoom or use the chat function to let the board know you would like to speak. So, let us see. First thing I would like to do is observe a moment of silence for Jeff Fitzgerald, our late planner. And let us just take a minute off. Okay, the first or the next item of business is the adoption of the minutes from the March 4 meeting. Does anyone? Does anyone have a motion regarding the minutes? Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Hi.
All those in favor, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, yes, here too.
Hi.
Now, let's see.
Okay, we have four full members of the planning board. So alternates, of course, may participate in all things except voting. First substantive item of business. Preliminary plan review for a major use site development plan entitled McMullen for Richard McMullen. The proposal is to create a five acre gravel pit and install a driveway on an undeveloped 95 acre property on the Bucksport Road, currently owned by Maurice Oliver, tax map 31 lot 47 in the rural industrial zones. This is to complete the preliminary plan and find completeness. And then if that completeness is found, we shall go on to the final plan. So discussion. John?
Just getting back to, you said there was four full time members and two alternates watching, correct?
No, no, we have. We have four full members in attendance right now.
Right, but so wouldn't one of the alternates be a voting member tonight?
Actually, both.
No, only one. If there's four full members.
Oh, right. Yeah, I'm sorry. Right. So who is senior alternate?
Nelson would be.
Okay, Nelson, you're on the spot. Good. And Mark, you've been spared. So any, any thoughts on the completeness of the preliminary plan? Let's see where we left that.
So, looking at this and thinking back way back to the last meeting, I believe Jan and Dwight, what I'm seeing here is rather than a conversation about what should be waived or not waived, I'm seeing all the line items with either applies or it doesn't apply, and if it does apply, complete or the or the status that it's in. So I hope that interpretation is correct.
That is correct.
There's a request for a waiver on 606.58 that monuments be shown on the base plan. Is there? Is there any discussion on this waiver request? No, no, no comments. Rick, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's deal with a waiver request for 602.9, which is my mutation shown on the plan. Anyone have any thoughts on this or a motion perhaps?
So do we need a motion to grant the waiver? Is that what you're asking?
Grant, grant or deny?
Well, yeah, right. Well, I motioned that we grant the waiver and a no vote would be denied.
Yes, and this is based on it's not harming the public interest and so on.
Yeah, my understanding is that they're going to talk to Dwight, I think, is going to walk it with them or something and
Yeah.
take care of it.
Well, I, now that's on the okay.
Yeah, it looks like
Yeah, go ahead.
It looks like the agreement is the code enforcement officer will walk the property, just common sense here, but it's not just walk the property, it's walking everything as an order that time.
Is there a, Rick has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise hands. Thank you. Motion granted. Now, was there any other matters regarding completeness?
I assume we're going to really raise other questions when we get down to the next item, which is the final approval. Or do you want to talk about these things now or?
Well, is there anything that should have been presented on the preliminary, which is not there?
I have one question, and that was there was some discussion about needing a profile for the driveway road thing.
Yes.
And was, was that part of the package? I don't think I saw it. Let me just add that I'm not sure that I care a whole lot, given the nature of the development, but but it did come up earlier, I think.
Okay, is that?
So that would be a completeness issue, I think. Oh, no. Is that a profile or a cross section?
Looks like it. This is the cross section of the driveway.
Right, I saw that. I thought it was supposed to be a profile of the drive.
So.
And elevations?
Yeah, so for this, they just drew the proposed driveway on the site plan, and then they provided just a typical cross section of what it would look like. And Steve Salisbury is representing the applicant, and the applicant is also on here, Richard McMullen, to answer any questions.
Steve, if you wish to comment?
What Jana says is correct. We supplied a cross section of the showing what the road whip will be and the shoulders and the ditches and things like that. That was my understanding of the request.
Yeah, and let me just say, I'm fine with that, but the folks at the last meeting or whenever we discussed this, we're talking about an actual profile, I thought, but.
Yeah, so there's been one kind of major change, I would say, between the last meeting we had in this meeting, and that is a site road is no longer being proposed. It's just a driveway.
Good, okay. Good move. No need for the profile, right?
Yeah, either way, you can get in and out of the site.
Cool.
Yeah.
I'm good.
So we ready to vote on the waiver request?
On the preliminary plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stop me here. Is there any motion for finding this application is complete?
If I can just say so moved, then I'm do it, but if
Yes, you can, you can, you can say that.
Okay, so moved.
Second?
Let's say again.
All in favor, please? Rick, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, now, having found it complete, we can go on to the item five, which is final plan review for a major site use development plan entitled McMullen for Richard McMullen. The proposal is to create a five acre gravel pit and install a driveway on an undeveloped 95 acre property on the Bucksport Road, currently owned by Maurice Oliver, tax map 31 lot 47 in the rural and industrial zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steven Salisbury is here with the applicant tonight.
So do you want to just go over this briefly for the benefit of the public who might be listening in?
Sure. My low tech, high tech map is behind me. The blue indicates the Bucksport Road. Pink indicates the access drive to the five acre pit, which is shown in yellow. The proposal at this time is to not have a pit larger than five acres. There was a couple of comments on the TRT memo that we reviewed with staff and came to the conclusion no DEP permit is necessary for gravel extraction of five acres or less. There was a confusion in the DEP requirements where it talks about extraction of long clay would would limit you to two acres, but this isn't a gravel extraction.
Questions from the board? John?
Okay, I noticed that on the plan, one of the notes has listed that there's no blast. Mr. McMullen agreed to that. I just want to, I'd like to propose a couple of other conditions on the, on the plan that be no rock crushing. I talked past, I'm like sure there's a prohibition all recreational vehicles, including but not limited to motorcycles, ATVs, UTVs and snowmobiles. And I'm not sure if talked about, I think we should talk what allow hours of operation should be, which would be prudent put on land. Maybe the student or the mom could. I have a suggestion for hours of operation be Monday, Friday, eight to four here. McMullen, if that's sounds prudent to him or, you know, he needs more hours to operate. I think just to keep, you know, good relations with the neighbors.
Yeah, I, I think the hours I'd rather see like, you know, seven to four, seven to five. And I'd like to see Saturdays included. And, and I would, I, I guess I would not agree to limiting myself to not being able to crush, I think, in a gravel pit that periodically I would have to rent a crusher and, you know, perform that, that task. So obviously, it would, would be limited, but I, I don't, I do not want to agree to no crushing.
Okay, I just thought I'd throw that out for, for discussion. What were the hours of operation again, Richard?
I, I guess I would like to see, you know, seven to four or five, you know, Monday through Saturday. Keeping in mind that, you know, at the current time, there's no plans of somebody actually being in there operating during those hours.
Okay, I mean, one of the biggest reasons I bring up the hours of operation back originally, the I know suggested that the, the city's noise ordinance would be used on this property. I mean, the noise ordinance is totally unusable for this type of operations. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure you, you know, have good relations with the neighbors. I mean, I think Monday to Saturday, seven to four is reasonable. I just don't want to get into a position where it goes into the evening and the city ends up with a lot of complaints from, from the neighbors.
No, I agree. It'd be good to keep the neighbors happy.
And why couldn't the noise ordinance be applied to this?
Because the noise ordinance allows for noise, basically dealing with construction. I mean, this is a kind of a construction related occasion from sitting in the morning until midnight. And I don't think the neighbors want to hear the this one operation from six.
Oh, let, let us recognize that Roger Lassard is here. Roger? Ah, not, ah, now, now I can probably hear you.
Yes, you probably can. I'm sorry. Everything went wrong and that could go wrong.
Congratulations. Nelson? Nelson, you're off the hook. Roger is here.
Hey, John, if I may, just during this moment about, just remind you about the public hearing portion of this as well. I just wanted to remind you of that in case anybody, okay, thank you.
So this is a public hearing, and anyone may speak or send messages to us. Is there anyone who wishes to do that? And Dwight, have you found, heard from anyone?
No, I have not received any emails, John.
Um. Okay.
I have a question about the natural buffer. This is in the landscaping section. It talks about the, the site plan shows the main DEP required buffer of 50 feet and proposes that the site of the gravel pit is approximately 200 feet from the closest property line. My question has to do with the next line, the applicant plans on keeping the existing natural buffer. I'm assuming that means 200 feet with whatever foliage is already in there. I'm, I'm assuming that's what that means.
Correct.
Okay, and then staff said, and then the next line says staff recommends that this buffer is sufficient to shoot. I'm assuming the phrase this buffer refers to the 200 feet of foliage. That question would be for staff, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
That includes, there's quite a bit of buffering between where the proposed pit is going to be in the Bucksport Road as well, which is part of the landscape standards.
Thank you.
Rick?
When, when, when the, when you're operating, is the idea that I have a porta potty or anything on site? And is there a city regulation that governs that? That's, that's a question for you and for the city, I guess.
I don't know of any regulation regarding porta potties. If there were a septic system going in for waste disposal, then of course it would have to meet that. Those would be state regulations. Well, I, I can see no reason why a porta potty could not be there.
Oh, right, no, one could be there, I think. The question is, will one be there? I mean, given that my operation might be all day, it seems, and I'm not sure it's something we can require, but it seems like would be reasonable.
I assume that the applicant would want people comfortable, so shall we say, but that is, that is really up to him.
Keep in mind those neighbors.
Are they expected to spy on people there?
You can never, you never know. It's, you know, it's a small town, right?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay. This is a final review to see that it meets the requirements of our ordinance. Shall I go down the review criteria for the final meeting? Let me do that. 607 deals with standards and criteria for governing site development plan. State and federal permits. Are there any required that the applicant has or does not have? Steve?
Yeah, the applicant's position is we do not need any state permits other than the entrance permit from.
Okay, and is that in hand? Do we have the entrance permit?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, there's also a stormwater permit by rule that was approved as well as a Natural Resource Protection Act permit that was approved as well for construction of the road and the disturbance to the wetland. So those, and they all have been approved and they're all within the packet as well.
Okay. Next is criterion standards, conformance with the comp plan. I don't find any conflict in that. Showing lands not suitable for development. Nothing's be, is anything beneath the normal high wall, not near a water body. None of this is in the 100 year flood plain, so that doesn't apply. I think the off-street parking requirements are not applicable to this. It's not in the shoreline zone. We've dealt with, we've covered landscaping in the discussion. Provisions will be made for vehicular access, and that has been done with the driveway. And there are no public streets involved here. And fire department have any comments on emergency vehicle access?
We're all set, John.
I I assume that there's no need for bike or pedestrian access and circulation, and John DeLeo has already mentioned about other recreational vehicles. We have stormwater plan, erosion sediment control, no parks open and space, natural historical features. I am assuming there will be no drinking water supply for this project.
Correct.
Just looking at groundwater protection language here. No onsite water supply sewage disposal. Okay. Sewer disposal. Any utilities, is electricity being brought into the site?
No.
Okay, and I assume that one. Any construction debris expected?
No building construction debris, no.
Yeah, because and any is there any, would there be any disposal of any debris from road driveway construction or anything on site?
Uh, can you define that?
Well, it says if onsite disposal of the street or right of way construction stumps and debris is proposed, disposal site shall be suitably covered with fill and topsoil lined, fertilized and seeded, and seeded. I assume that's lined. But my, my guess is that this again doesn't apply here. As it's written. No street names or traffic signs, I assume, will be done. You're not having any signs, are you?
No, I was just issued an actual street address that I can, I can put up, but that's it.
Yeah. And okay, are there any exposed storage areas, machinery installations and such?
No.
Okay, there'll be no buildings there, okay?
Correct.
And I believe that we don't need exterior lighting in a gravel pit, especially since no electricity has been brought in. We have heard from the fire department that emergency vehicle access is okay. And Mike, is there any reason for fire protection prevention ordinance with regard to the site?
No, not, not that I have found, John. I think we're all set with, with that.
And the last item here is waste disposal proposed development shall provide for adequate disposal of solid waste and hazardous waste, et cetera. I assume no hazardous waste?
Correct.
And solid waste. Would that be any solid waste produced that needs to be disposed of?
Uh, I guess you'd have to have Steve answer that. I'm not sure. Uh, I guess you'd have to have Steve answer that, I'm not sure, uh, what the definition of solid waste would be.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure in this instance what it is either, but one assumes that there is no, uh, trash or other stuff produced.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, that deals with the site review. So any other, are there any other questions for the applicant regarding this, at this, this plan?
Anything mentioned hours of operation?
John, John, you had, yeah, John Delia, you had mentioned that before.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Uh, there's nothing that I find in the ordinance regarding hours or operation, do you, Jana?
Couldn't see any.
Yeah.
No, we don't have anything specific, um, within the ordinance that would regulate that. The only thing, um, would be consideration of noise for neighbors is John now would be like since.
I see, yes, something we're gonna put in the ordinance or eventually we'll have to get in there. Not for this project, but I mean.
I'm glad you volunteered to work on that.
Sure.
So what would the board like to do with regard to this application? Yes.
John. Make the motion, I had, uh, one question for Mr. McMullin, I, I believe at this point, I, I mean, I saw a real estate transfer, so Richard, do you own this property now?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I, I was gonna word a emotion, I mean, currently, it says currently owned by Maurice Oliver, but I, I thought you now were the owner of it, so. I'll make a motion if, if there isn't any other discussion.
One, one of the second, uh, don't you have to have a, uh, quote, a public hearing end quote before you make a motion?
We did. I had opened it to a public hearing and there was no one, no signal that anyone.
Went by so quickly, I missed it, sorry.
Yeah, I'll just confirm, I haven't gotten anything on the, um, question and answer form here for, uh, the webinar.
Yeah, and, and Dwight, you have nothing?
No, I've received nothing.
Right, so I'll second that.
This, okay, this is just so shows what a very controversial matter this is. So.
The only thing I, I would wanna offer is on the TRT, we had talked about the easement through the Haslam property.
Uh, yes, the, um, is there anything covering that? Steve?
We have a letter from the neighbor granting permission to use the existing road.
Jana, is that, uh, what you're concerned about?
Yes, we, we, the letter is, is great, um, in terms of right now, and then we had said, suggested that perhaps they would formalize that easement or a right-of-way, um, and just provide the code enforcement office with that, uh, to be able to have that documentation. As part of this approval. Dwight, speak to that.
Probably, uh, Steve, it should be, um, on file with the, with the registry as part of the, the final plans.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have that in the office before gravel is actually harvested from the pit.
Yeah.
You say that again, Dwight, I didn't quite hear your.
I'd like to have that easement to us prior to the gravel being harvested. Now, he can go in and prep it and clear and do all that, but before he starts harvesting it, we should have that. I don't want someone coming in that they, all of a sudden they irritated because Ms. McMullin is going through that right away and they, well, I gave him a piece of paper, but I don't wanna do it now. Well, it's safer for us if it's actually recorded, it's registry deeds, as an easement or purchase, one of the other.
And I would point out safer for the applicant.
Yes.
So was, uh, Steve, any thoughts about that?
That's, that condition's fine.
Okay, good. Oh, someone has a visitor.
I knew that happened sometime tonight.
I'm waiting for mine, but it hasn't happened yet.
There'll be another one, believe me.
I like the, the practice ease with which you remove the obstacle. Okay, so we have a motion to, to approve and the conditions, John, are?
Uh, what I'd like to do is, um, conditions, it, it's already on the, on the plan, but no blasting, no recreational vehicles, uh, including but not limited motorcycles, ATVs, UTVs, snowmobiles. Hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And let the applicant provide the code enforcement office with a D for the right-of-way or easement or property.
Uh, Mr. Ray. Can I just jump in, Mr. McMullin, it was four o'clock, okay, or you had mentioned five?
Um, we, if we could do five, that would be good, we might as well do seven to five.
John, what do you think? Your motion?
I'll change it to seven.
To five, then?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, my cat has made an appearance, but she is behind the computer screen. So just be prepared. And Rick, is that, uh, acceptable as far as your second goes?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? In that case, all in favor, please? Hmm, okay. It has passed. So, Mr. McMullin, uh, you may continue to, uh, enjoy the planning board meeting, or we will not be hurt if you decide not to.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too.
You too. Next item of business is a preliminary plan review for a major site, used site development plan entitled Mariahville Road, Ellsworth Solar East Site from Mariahville Road, Ellsworth Solar LLC subsidiary of Sunraise Development LLC. The proposal is to construct a 3.1 acre solar energy facility, install 5,780 photovoltaic panels, and build a 540 linear foot gravel access road on the 28.92 acre parcel on the Mariahville Road, currently owned by Bridgetwin LLC, tax map 50 lot 39, located in the urban and residential shoreline zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Uh, yes, hi, this is, uh, Pat Jackson, uh, with Sunraise, as well as, uh, with us tonight, Evan Baker of Stantec, um, for our engineering.
Okay, well, go ahead and tell us about the project.
Great, thanks for your time, everybody, and thanks for setting this up remotely. Appreciate it. Yes, this is a project our company's been developing, uh, for, uh, the much anticipated, uh, community solar program that the legislature put in place last June that is set to roll out this summer. Essentially, um, this project is exactly what the state of Maine is looking for through the bill that was passed, uh, called LD 1711. And they're looking for sites like this, uh, near existing infrastructure, uh, which, uh, the site is, is near three phases, near substation. And, uh, the intent here is for it to be a community solar project, so, uh, our company will be working with, electric customers in the AmeriV territory to, uh, be off-takers for, uh, the eventual power that this project generates. Uh, and those customers will receive a discount on their AmeriV bill. So it's, it's a great program the state of Maine has created, um, that we're really fortunate and excited to be a part of. Little background, I know the next agenda item is, is a similar project from us as well, so just for everybody's benefit, Sunraise is a, uh, Portsmouth, New Hampshire-based commercial, uh, solar energy company. I'm a partner with them and I, I've been living in Maine for, uh, close to 15 years now, um, and, uh, essentially we're, um, a local team that be using, uh, local contractors, site workers, electric engineers. And so, um, we currently intend to be the, not just the developer, but the, um, owner and operator as well. We've gone through the TRT process, um, and thanks, Jana, for all the hard work you and your colleagues have put together on that. Happy to answer any questions you guys have. Evan, again, is our engineer for the project, so anything engineering related, um, he's best fit for those kind of questions.
I'm glad to see Evan, that you're right side up now.
Yes, thanks, John.
Sideways, you know, it's harder to trust. So, questions from the planning board? John?
Yes. Thank you, uh, Patrick, on section 606, uh, of your application of submission materials, uh, your timeframe for construction, I know, uh, you're gonna be doing grubbing, initial grating for access road, uh, in November and December. I mean, you feel with the possibility of snowfall during that time that you'd still be able to do that, can, considering the weather condition?
Uh, yeah, John, it's tentative, um, depends on, it always depends on how much snowfall we're getting. Light, light snow can be actually a great time to do site work. Ground's dry and, and hard, um, if it's, if it's heavy snow, then we would probably choose to wait until, uh, late winter.
And then, uh, I know you have a purge and sales agreement in here, but under, um, the decommissioning plan, uh, in the middle, right under that headline says decommissioning of the system will occur within 120 days, following the 20 to 30 year end of lease term. Could you explain that? I mean, I, because I know your company leases property to do this, but, but you're gonna be purchased this property.
Yeah, exactly, so on this particular site, um, we are purchasing, um, and, and um, what we'll do is we will essentially, um, lease it back to ourselves, um, so that it has a 20-year lease, but, it's, it's essentially, uh, it's a standard financing type structure, um, so we, we will, I guess, essentially be both the owner and the, the leasor.
Okay, and then under the emergency response plan, uh, down at the bottom, emergency response jurisdictions, fire department, public works, sheriff's office, state police. Possibly, and potentially you'll not list the Ellsworth Police Department as a contact. That might be in there.
I, I couldn't hear all that, John, um, would you mind repeating yourself?
Under the emergency response jurisdictions, you list the fire department, sheriff's office, state police, but do not list the Ellsworth Police Department.
Uh, yeah, we can, um, I'm sorry.
Yeah, John, I can answer a little bit to that. Um, I've had some, um, lengthy discussions, not necessarily with Patrick or Evan, but, um, with Kevin, another individual with the project. And, um, we're actually working towards the emergen, the full emergency operations plan when everything gets up to running, which could be a while yet. So, um, and we've mentioned to them about getting, oh, getting, getting all those people on there. So, it's, it's a work in progress and one of the things that, in my letter, um, to them on April 20th actually discusses the idea of having the, um, preliminary or the partial operations plan available prior to the final plan. So those, those things I think are still coming. It, it, it is a document, it's work in progress.
Yeah, well, it should be on the final plan, however.
Correct. Another question, Patrick, on the estimated cost, uh, and financial assurance, you listed the total cost and then total cost after 20 years. And rate. But the possibility that this we, this, uh, this operation goes for 35 years. I mean, should those figures cost the decommissioning plan up to 35 years be included in your plan? And, I mean, it'll also come in on the, on the last page where you have the, the actual contract, decommissioning bond.
Yeah, um, sure, John, so, um, the, just the, the background on that is, um, the May in solar program is a 20-year program. So all we expect the solar project to operate for is, is 20 years. And so it's standard in the industry to basically provide a 20-year decommissioning inflation-adjusted price. In the event, um, that in 17, 18, 19, 20 years, whatever, um, this, the state wants to continue with solar projects, maybe there's nuclear plants have come down and there's a need for all this power, um, we, we would be choosing to continue, assuming the, uh, you know, it made sense, and so since that's such an unknown, frankly, I, I guess what I think would probably be more reasonable or reflective of reality is, you know, in, in continuing at year 20, revisiting the cost and providing an updated cost estimate to the board or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this from the point of view of protecting the Ellsworth taxpayers, uh, I mean, in 20 years, I'm not sure too much of us on the, on this, uh, will still be here, at least not on the planning board. But, uh, I think, I think there should be something in there. You know, just in case it goes beyond the 20 years, that, okay, you know, say you're 30, at year 35, you know, your company is not gonna say, well, we'll give you the 91,000. You see what I mean? I'm, I'm just trying to cover all the bases if it does go to 35.
And, John, this is Evan speaking, um, in our application materials, you know, we, we do note that, uh, decommissioning costs will be reassessed after commencement of operations and also after decommissioning, so. So we're, we're accounting for that eventuality, um, just not with a hard number at this point, as Pat mentioned.
Okay, I mean, obviously the performer's bond is, is gonna go to the city attorney for review, so I'll leave it in the, figure out the fine print, fine print. Thank you. That was the end of my question, John Fink.
Okay, anyone else have questions? Rick?
Yeah, um, that's the site, or actually the sites, I guess, uh, they're not dead level now, right? The rolling terrain, pretty much?
Yes, that's correct.
They're.
Okay. So my question is, uh, does, does the site get really leveled out to accommodate the panels? Or does, or do, in the end, do the, you know, is there still rolling terrain, I guess? Is that clear?
Yeah, um, so the, the intent for solar projects these days is to do as, as minimal grading as is really necessary. Solar racking, uh, can now handle undulations in the land, whereas years ago it could not. You really had to flatten the.
Okay, so, so, and what you're saying is that this falls into that prior category, well, not the, yeah, I mean, that, that it doesn't have to be leveled out, is what you're saying. Correct? Okay, are you collecting any?
We'd prefer not to, we, we wanna disturb as little.
Oh, sure, and, and cut and fill is always expensive, so who needs that? Um, is there stormwater that's being collected on site?
So I, I can handle that question, John, so the project engineering team.
So I, I can handle that question, John. So the project engineering team, Sewell.
Yes.
They, they've developed the storm water plan and erosion sediment control plan that are in the site plans. And we filed for, and we've received a stormwater PBR. The documentation for that will come with the, the finalized NERPA permit, once we get that from DEP.
Okay, so that's, but that's for during construction or is that for after construction also?
Both, yeah. Yeah, the erosion sediment control, control plan, the erosion sediment control plan details how, how we're dealing with erosion sediment control issues during and after completion of construction.
Okay, my, so my, my question is, after construction, are you still collecting storm water on site? Or is it just left to kind of, you know, seep in?
So I, I guess I'm struggling to understand your question. Are you asking if we're gonna have any detention basins or?
I, I'm one, I just, I, somewhere, somewhere on there, I thought I saw a notation about some pipes or what, but, you know, sewer pipes for storm water, is that not correct?
Correct, yeah. On the site, there's a culvert at the turn in the access road with a level spreader on the down slope side.
Okay, so my question is, okay, that terminology I'm not familiar with. The idea is that you're still collecting storm water, what happens to it after you collect it? Does it just, is it, does it go into some sort of detention pond or does it flow off site?
So the level spreader is, is how you deal with the storm water flow in that case.
Okay, so you spread it out and it just magically disappears?
Yeah, yeah, so Sewell's run the calc's and determined that, that type of feature to deal with the culvert outflow is appropriate in that case.
Okay.
And I assume that they also took into account the sort of impervious area created by the panels themselves.
Yeah, correct. So we calculate the impervious area based on the access road, the equipment pads, and then the panel footings. In discussions with Dwight, it was determined that based on the panel spacing, there is enough ground in between the panels that will be kind of a meadow buffer in between the panels that we counted the panel foundations themselves as impervious area.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I have another couple. One, they're easy, okay? In terms of, is there a requirement that they have some sort of grading plan? I mean, I, I'm personally, I'm happy with what they said about, you know, it's gonna follow the ground and all that. Do they, is there a requirement that they have to have a grading plan for something like this, though?
This, Dwight, typically, no. If you're not having a disturbance to the soil, wouldn't need a grading plan. And what they're doing, they have enough setback, they're about three hundred feet from the Union River. So this water is going through that pipe, that level spreader is gonna sheet off towards that wet area.
Okay.
That's why, that's how they got away from having to have any retention area.
Okay, okay. Last point, you said that the driveway that comes in off of whatever route number is will be gated. I would just caution, you may want to put a note that that gate's gonna be back far enough so that trucks or whatever that are coming and going can, you know, get off the road onto the site before they open the gate and bite, and when they go off also, go out, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the plan is currently designed to allow that amount of space. And, and we've talked with Mike Haney and the Elsor Fire Department and determined that, you know, the amount of space would be sufficient for, for their vehicles as well.
Okay, and you're happy with that, Mike?
Yeah, Rick, the, from what I see on my plans, the gates are about between sixty, maybe seventy feet off of the main.
Well, that's fine, sure.
So, you know, somewhere's around there. Our, our main concern, however, that is that though, when, when the gates or when the fences are actually installed, that they maintain that distance and don't move the distance closer to the road or whatever. So we want to be, watch that very carefully.
Okay, okay. And, and last, on, for the driveway off of the highway, for the one site, you show basically a, a simple driveway flare that goes, the flare goes both ways. For the other site, though, that entrance exit onto the, onto the street is not just a flare out. There's the, you know, flares out the one side and it kind of cuts off to the other. I guess my question is, what's the deal with that?
So you're talking about the, the west site has the, the simple flare and you're, I assume you're referring to the east site where it's flare to one side, is that correct?
Yes.
To the south side.
I guess my question is, why is there, I mean, routinely, I would have expected to see a flare there like the west site. Why isn't it the same on the east side?
I believe part of that is due to the existing ground conditions there, because there's already an existing entrance on site.
Okay.
So incorporating that into the design, I believe is what resulted in that kind of approach to the driveway.
Okay. Does that, does the fact that it's squared off affect vehicles, are they gonna turn to the right? I mean, will they be running over, running off the driveway area?
Rick, that's actually a full driveway with fifteen foot culvert going, oh, probably forty or fifty feet. That was existed, is actually curving separating the entrance and exit. So they're still, it flares off to the right anyway, they're just not showing it on the plan.
That's what I wanted to hear. You should let Dwight answer all the questions.
Hey, if he wants to.
I'm just kidding, I'm good, thanks.
Anyone else?
I've got a question about, so I'm looking at sheet C one and I'd say a couple of questions about the, the treatment or the, the building over the wetland areas marked in red. I think there's three there, C, E, and F. And there's a, there's a note that talks about installation during the winter to minimize, reduce impacts from equipment. Can, can you just talk a minute about installing the solar panel pedestals in those wetland areas? And kind of what, what that looks like or what, what the, what the technique is there? I presume, based on what I'm seeing here, they're not getting filled, so you're just sort of installing in the ground as it is, is that the case?
Yeah, candidly, I'm not, I'm not too savvy on the construction side, but I'll, I'll do my best on that one, Nelson. So basically, through the DEP permitting process, we've agreed to take down the trees but to not fill in any of the wetlands, which is standard practice to them. And so the nice thing about the solar installation side is that the racking are essentially just ground, earth screws that go down into the ground. So you, we're not doing any excavation. You can literally just drive those screws right into it.
And speak for myself, if not all the other board members, what might be kind of helpful, maybe on the future plan is, as I understand, you guys have done other projects like these and I'm gonna guess probably in similar terrain, both rolling, undulating terrain, as well as some limited wetlands. I don't know if there's any photography that you could provide that show what the, what that looks like for those of us that don't have any experience with materials.
Yeah, be happy to, Nelson.
Thanks.
If there are no further questions, shall I go down the submission materials for preliminary plan?
Hey, John, can I just remind you about the public hearing?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone out there who wishes to participate?
I have one question for you, John.
Okay.
This individual is concerned with what the front and setback sidelines will be from the road and from main propane. And then I answered the other question earlier for him on the phone, but we know there's a fence going up. This is just, is this just a chain link fence or is it a privacy fence or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a chain link fence.
Okay, so there's, there won't be any vinyl in there for, for to obscure what's there, so, okay, that was his other question. And I am gonna send him a copy of the print tomorrow, then he can just send questions to us.
What was the first question, Dwight, about the road and the propane tanks?
The setbacks from the, the one eighty for the panels themselves and the setback from his property line from the.
Say the second part again, I'm sorry, you just cut out.
I'm sorry. The, he's concerned of a setback of the actual panels from his property line. This is my main propane.
Okay.
Call from the road. He's just looking at the effect the visibility will have on his, he has a back lot. I'm assuming that it would be future development on his back lot.
So did you want the applicants to respond to that then?
Yeah, I think they can get more accurate to what I did, trying to scale it off.
Okay.
Yeah, gladly. So just based off, off the drawing here, we've got a setback, there's, before you even, even reach the panels, there's a setback of thirty feet or more to the main propane lot, which is the one directly south, and then the back lot, again, over thirty feet to the fence line and then an additional ten to twenty feet to the panels.
Now, that's, I, I come out roughly fifty feet, so that. Thank you.
John, I don't have any Q and A questions or answers on the, just so you know.
Okay, and I assume Nate has nothing either. John? You're muted.
Yeah, good. About the fence, I think Dwight or one of the applicants said something about the, that it's just a chain link fence. But on the landscaping, it says it's an opaque chain link fence, so, I mean, can you see right through it or does it provide some buffering? I mean, it's hard to buff a five acres of solar panel, but I think Dwight asked and they answered that it's just a regular chain link fence.
Yeah, that, that's correct, John. In the preliminary plan, the, the setbacks from the property lines were slightly less than what's currently displayed on this, this plan set. So hence the change, just a chain link fence.
Are you saying it is not opaque?
Correct. Yeah, just the standard chain, thanks.
Okay.
However, that is something that we, we would deal with at the final. Right now, we're concerned that the items B that are required on the preliminary plan will be there, whether they're going to be the same as, as at the final or not, so. The, the final plan should reflect any changes from the preliminary. So shall I go down the submission requirements? You do that application form, yes, right title or interest. We have a schedule of construction, statement of overall cost, name of development, et cetera. Are monuments erected? Mr. Jackson, are monuments erected?
Currently?
Yes.
For the purposes of a survey, is that, is that one?
Well, just as all monuments are, no need, if they are there, they need to be shown.
I, I can answer that one, Pat. Yeah, so the monuments and all the information on the survey plan was incorporated into the current site plans that the city has.
Okay. I'm just looking, okay, next big thing, existing and proposed conditions, yeah. We have existing site conditions. Any maintenance agreements for, no, privately, I was. And we have proposed site conditions are reflected. I assume there is no septic systems and such.
Correct.
And a lighting plan somehow doesn't seem applicable, but are you proposing any lighting?
So we included, based on the TRT meeting and notes that we received from Jenna and Dwight, a lighting detail, there's the potential for a motion sensor light if on the off chance maintenance is required.
I am assuming there's no bike or pedestrian circulation condition here.
No.
Stormwater management plan, utility plan, I, yeah. No wastewater disposal, no drinking water. Groundwater impact analysis.
Yeah, so based, based on our determination and we received concurrence from Dwight and Jenna that we didn't need to do a groundwater impact analysis based on the project.
Okay. Fire department happy with this? Mike, Fire Department?
Yes, we have, and I, I have to correct myself, you should have a letter in your packet dated April twenty seventh, not April twentieth, that describes everything. We're, we're, we're quite happy. We've been talking back and forth, emailing back and forth now for, what, a couple of months concerning the project, and I think we've got everything ironed out, so.
Okay, we've already talked about fences and stuff, which are shown. You're not preparing, proposing any park or open space, I assume.
Correct, no parks or open space.
And. Okay, that's pretty much it for the completeness. Anything else regarding it will be dealt with at final. So what would the board like to do? John?
Ready?
Yeah. Oh, David, did you have something to say?
I do, but I'll wait.
Well, you wanted to say it before the motion or is it okay?
But I'm gonna go back to the fence, okay?
Okay, yes.
Because I'm looking at C O, C zero, and it shows the fence line. So how far back is the vegetation gonna be cut from this, from these fences? And it is also, there won't be any tree line along Route one eighty at all. It's kind of like hides the panels.
So there, there's existing vegetation along Route one eighty, to the extent that it's there. I mean, the existing development has some impervious area existing. But the, the fence line is set back over thirty feet from Route one eighty.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
John? You do a motion.
I'll make a motion that would prove the preliminary plan review for the major site development plan entitled Arrival Road Elsor Solar East Site from Arrival Road Elsor Solar LLC subsidiary Sunrise Development LLC. The proposal is to construct a three point one acre solar energy facility, install five thousand seven hundred eighty photovoltaic panels and build a five hundred forty linear foot gravel access. The proposal is to construct a 3.1 acre solar energy facility, install 5,780 photovoltaic panels and build a 540 linear foot gravel access road. On a 28.92 acre parcel on Mariville Road, currently owned by Bridgetwin LLC, tax map 50, lot 39, located in an urban and limited residential shore land zone.
And the application is complete?
The application is complete.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's removed and seconded, the application is complete, is there any discussion before voting? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise a hand. Okay. You can almost go home, but not yet. The next item of business is preliminary plan for a major use site development entitled Mariville Road, Ellsworth Solar West Site. From Mariville Road, Ellsworth Solar LLC subsidiary of Sunraise Development LLC. The proposal is to construct a 7.53 acre solar energy facility, install 5,120 photovoltaic panels. And build a 677 linear foot gravel access road on an 11.6 acre parcel on the Mariville Road. Currently owned by Bridgetwin LLC, tax map 59, lot 14-1-2 in the urban zone. And I assume it's the same team representing the applicant.
Yes, correct.
That's correct.
Is there anything that? Very, the description for this would vary materially from the east side?
Not from my perspective.
Questions from the board then?
Okay, on the east side, the runoff is going to Union River, how about on the west side? For the stormwater. It's on the other side of 180. So where does it go? It doesn't go to Union River?
So, so based on the topography, there's a large wetland on the western side of the project and that's.
Okay.
On the project site that then. Would flow eventually offsite and there's a stream that was mapped on the northeast, in the northeast corner of the site. And that leaves the site goes underneath Route 180, so I mean, everything eventually goes down to the Union River, but it's a while before it gets there.
I'm just saying, how's it gonna go, is it go under, is there drainage under 180?
Yeah, there's a current cover there.
There is, there is.
That's, that's not under control of Sunraise, but.
No, right, yeah, transportation.
Okay. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Hey, this is a public hearing, does any member of the public wish to comment or have commented already? What?
John, I've got 17 questions here. No, I'm just kidding.
No.
I don't have.
You have nothing, you have nothing.
Nothing on the webinar.
Okay, close the public hearing. This is such another controversial matter, it's, you know. At least we're not facing an empty council chamber. We can be neglected in the comfort of our own homes. So. Having gone through this, the. Preliminary plan requirements, is there anything that you find on this one to be missing? It's pretty much the same as the previous one. Would someone like to make a motion perhaps? John?
I'll move to accept the preliminary plan review for a major use site development plan entitled Mariville Road Solar, Ellsworth Solar West Site. From Mariville Road, Ellsworth Solar LLC subsidiary of Sunraise Development LLC. The proposal is to construct a 7.53 acre solar energy facility, install 5,120 photovoltaic panels. And build a 677 linear foot gravel access road. On a 28.92 acre parcel on Mariville Road, currently owned by Bridgetwin LLC, tax map 59, lot 14-1-2. Located in the urban zone and we find that the plan is complete.
Is there a second?
Not good.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate. Okay, well, gentlemen, you can go home, so to speak. And thank you for your presentation, we'll see you all back for the final.
Thank you guys, all for your time.
You're welcome. It's too bad we didn't have this catered, you know? Would you indulge me on a moment while I take a potty break here? Thank you.
Always looking for an opportunity to build some more housing in Ellsworth, including some market rate. And with the approval finally after about five years of the senior housing bond money that was voted on in, I don't know, 2014, 2013. Money became available to do projects, particularly rural projects as the Maine State Housing Authority defined them. Rural basically Hancock County counting as a rural county, therefore it was a target area for them. They put together some, some financing packaging that would, would work to allow new construction on the site. We applied and were successful, so we have a funding commitment from the Maine State Housing Authority to build the 29 unit senior affordable housing building. And we, so that's our phase one, this is a phase project and our phase two is a little more market driven, a little more demand driven. Those are market rate apartments which we built before other places, mostly in southern Maine. Those will be dependent upon construction costs and rents in the market. And it'll be, the numbers are really, really close to working, but the, a little bit of downtick in rent or a little bit of uptick in cost really determines the feasibility, so those are going to be. Those are going to be phase two, but phase one is much more firm and we're looking to start construction on that. Hopefully this summer, should we be approved and should everything come together? And the other one will be a little more market dependent. Senior affordable housing, I won't get into a long speech about affordable housing, what it is and isn't. Basically, it'll be 62 and over residents who will pay 30% of their income for rent. And I can talk more about that if there's interest, but I'm not sure that's a planning board item or not, but again, I'm happy to talk about it. And I think that is probably the extent of the remarks I will make, I'm happy to take any questions on those issues or I could just hand it over to Nancy St. Clair. Who is a project engineer who can go over the technical aspects of the project.
Does anyone have any questions at this point? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have shared my screen, can you folks see that?
Yes.
Okay, so what you see on the, the screen right now is the colored up view of the site. And so we'll talk a little bit just about sort of orientation on the site. On the lower end of the image, you can see Foster Street. And this sort of wavy line here is Oriole Way that was constructed a few years ago. So the 29 unit senior affordable housing is in this building right here. And this is phase one of the project. And down here on Foster Street are the two 12 unit market rate apartments that are located with their frontage along Foster Street. When we met with the TRT team, we talked a little bit about a few different things on the site, so. The information that was submitted to you folks is in response to some of the comments that we received as part of the TRT review. One of which is to make the circulation pattern in the phase two parking to be a one-way circulation. So that the drives are limited to an in and an out only. Parking along, for the senior housing, we had originally had some parking along Oriole Way that's been eliminated. We are proposing a lesser number of parking spaces. With that, we still meet the ordinance requirements for parking, actually have two spaces extra for the senior affordable housing and for the. Two market rate buildings were actually two spaces short of the ordinance requirements, so that is why we've been asking for an offset on the parking numbers for that. So that helps to balance that out. So as you can see on the narrative here, the total number of units is 53. That is comprised of 29 units in this phase one building, the senior affordable housing. Those are all one bedroom units and it's a three-story building. In the two 12 unit buildings, it's also a three-story building. Those units are a mix of one and two bedroom units. And those are basically the design of that building is such that there's an entrance on this side of the building. And an entrance on this side of the building, this building's actually turned 90 degrees, so the entrance is here and here. And each entrance serves six units in the building, so two units, one on each side of an entry and a stairwell here. Same thing on that side and then the same thing here, so each entry accesses half of the building. These little bump outs here are the mechanical rooms that are for the building. The mechanical room for this building is integrated into the main vestibule of the building. The apartment building for the senior affordable housing has also a side door here and a side door here. So talk a little bit about the actual buildings themselves. These are the architectural elevations that were in your packet. Architect is the engineer, is the architect for the project and these are the foreside elevations for the proposed 29 unit building. So as I mentioned, three stories, this is the front facade that faces the parking area and these are the sides and this is the rear of that building. This is the floor plan, the center vestibule entry, there's a common central aisle and stairs on either side with an elevator in the lobby area there. For the 12 unit buildings, these are the architectural elevations, this is the front side that would face Foster Street. Each unit is a corner unit, so each unit has either a balcony or patio, depending on where it is in the, on each floor. This is the side view, if you will, of the building, the same building. Then floor plan wise, as I mentioned, you would come into a center entry area, access this unit, access that unit, go up to the second floor, do the same all the way through. And this is just the mirror image of that on the opposite side for that. So as part of our response to comments, we submitted a package as part of your review packet. I won't go through every plan in that packet, but I did kind of want to just sort of highlight a few things for each phase of the project. And I think that the grading and utility plan is probably a good place to start with that. So here we have Oriole Way. Along the side and that goes down to its intersection with Foster Street. This green line here is a gravity sewer line that would be coming from the building and tying into the sewer line in Foster Street. When Oriole Way was constructed, there was a water line that was put in Oriole Way. And so the building services for that would come off of that water line in Oriole Way. With regard to drainage, we have a few different features on the site to handle runoff from the developed portion of the property. We have the pink lines that you see on this image are the storm drain lines that come through the site. And we have in this area here, a grass underdrain soil filter, a second grass underdrain soil filter here, a roof drip line DMP for the runoff from the roof. And then a series of catch basins that encircle the site and collect the runoff to go into either one of these two treatment areas for both treatment and attenuation for stormwater storage. Spent quite a bit of time, if you recall, we actually were before you folks back in the fall of last year to talk about this project. It's a little bit different layout wise than what you saw, but not tremendously different. But one of the things we did spend quite a bit of time talking about is drainage. As you know, the site has quite a bit of relief, especially on the west side of the parcel. And you can see there's the ravines that come down through and this is the. Ellsworth Housing Authority, Union River Estates Building. Spent a fair amount of time talking to the folks downstream, they have issued some comments to you and as a result of our conversations and discussions, I think the last one was that they were pretty satisfied. If you look at these, at the site, our building was proposed in this location here. The parking is proposed in this location here and our, one of our grass underdrain soil filters is located right about in this area. And our, one of our grass under drain soil filters is located right about in this area here. You'll see this line that comes through here. This is actually a storm drain line that comes from the backside of the Ellsworth Shopping Center that crosses through the site, discharges down through. The whole approach to our stormwater program, we spent quite a bit of time working with the city staff is to have our project look at controlling and treating the runoff from our site. And we designed it in such a fashion that the discharge from the stormwater facilities on the site actually do not discharge down into these ravines, but actually come out and go through phase two and tie in, which you can see, I'll show you. So all, all of the facilities for stormwater for phase one are collected and they cross over to phase two in the storm drain line located here. The connection for that is right here in phase two. And it comes down through, we pick up the runoff from the buildings in phase two. And we come down to a point here. And we're proposing to install a new segment of storm drain along the edge of Foster Street to tie into the Foster Street drainage system. As part of our stormwater modeling, we actually modeled not only the runoff coming through the site from the shopping center, but our pre and post development conditions as well as the stormwater facilities in Foster Street itself. We worked with Jana and Lisa and Dwight to gather the information and actually prepare a model for that. So we have done an extensive amount of stormwater modeling for the project. It's our understanding that that's under peer review right now. But with the program that we have established, we're actually, there's, you look at. We looked at four different analysis points. We looked at this point here where runoff leaves the site. We looked at this point here where runoff leaves the site. We looked at the interconnection between where we're tying in to the Foster Street drainage system. And we looked at its system outlet down at the Union River. All of that data is in our stormwater evaluation. We're showing reductions at these two analysis points because we didn't have any runoff coming from the site into that street system. We do show a slight increase here, but it's well within what we anticipate would be an acceptable means for conveyance through the system. We modeled the system and it can handle it through there. At the downstream end of the site, there's been some updated information that we were able to gather as a result of the city's further investigation down on Water Street. So there's actually a larger pipe than what was anticipated down there. So that's actually a benefit to the system as well. So with that, we have the full plan set. If you'd like to review anything in particular. But with that, we'd like to open it up to any questions you folks.
I'll take it. Report, it had, didn't know if it was a six inch drainage across the end of Foster Street or 15 inch. So I assume now it's 15 inch.
It's actually 18. So it was actually a good thing, definitely to find that out.
Before we, before we go on, on this, have you seen the comments by, let me see, Robert Hayes at 20 Washington Street?
Yes, that was provided for, to us earlier.
Yeah, for the benefit of the public, I'm going to try and read this quickly. As a nearby property owner, I ask that the Ellsworth Planning Board play, pay close attention to the proposed paved area and stormwater management around the three multi-unit buildings, plan for this development. Recent projects on Washington Street have had inadequate water management that has resulted in stormwater runoff into the street. Parking lot paving has been done too close to the street with two steep embankments. And this has resulted in erosion of the slope on the street side. All the runoff water goes very short distance to the Union River Ellsworth Harbor. I also ask that the planning board pay close attention to the proposed heating and cooling systems for the three buildings. Adequate insulation and south facing orientation of the buildings on the lot to take advantage of solar exposure should be encouraged. It's very disappointing that the recent large developments on Water Street, Washington Street and Oriole Way have no solar component in spite of the excellent southern exposure. The proposed Foster Street units should, could be designed to incorporate solar power, save future costs and decrease Ellsworth's carbon emissions. These considerations should be part of any new construction in Ellsworth as part of the community green plan. It's easier to do this as part of the planning and construct, and construction rather than adding it later. Thank you for conceding, for considering these issues. Sincerely, Robert Hayes, 20 Washington Street. Now I do realize I'm reading that, that a number of the things are beyond planning board purview, such as orientation of the buildings and solar energy and so forth. They may be good ideas, but there's nothing that, we have no authority over that. Any question, any questions from the planning board at this point? John.
Yes, I'd like to address the issue on the market rate housing on Foster Street. I'm dead set against two curb cuts. And I say that because this planning board has been quite conservative in, in granting curb cuts driveways. Because I consider any driveway, any intersection, a location where a crash can take place. So I key in a lot on access management. And in the past, recent past, even go back quite a ways, we've had similar 12 unit apartments. I mean, two on Washington Street that only has one driveway. Four Oak Beachland has one driveway. We've had housing projects up on 1A, I think 15 houses, one driveway, 15 houses on the Bucksport Road, one driveway. The Hapkin also is, is lacking two parking places here. I don't agree with sharing them with the senior housing. And I would suggest that the westernmost driveway is closed, which would give you an opportunity to gain your two missing parking places at that driveway. It's designed, the, the two curb cuts is designed as one way in, one way out. I think that's oftentimes doesn't work. I think all you have to do is, is look at the post office parking lot to, I mean, how many times have, have you been down there and seen somebody come in the exit? People don't pay attention to signs. So I'm, I'm just totally not in favor of two curb cuts for this project. I'll give you a chance to answer that. And I also have some other questions.
So I guess I, I'll jump in on that. We could certainly take a look at that. And it is, it is a small parking lot. And see about reconfiguration to add those two parking spaces in lieu of that second entrance. I guess I would ask if other board members had similar feelings and thoughts or whether we shouldn't go down that road.
I ask you a question, Nancy.
Sure.
So is it the, does the, does the one-way circulation within the lot decrease the width of the lot to keep us out of that ravine? Or is it pretty much the same width of drive aisles, whether it's one-way or two-way?
Because we have perpendicular parking, we kept the same drive aisle width as you would have in a two-way configuration.
Okay. So there's, so there's nothing about the ravines that would preclude us from looking at this alternative?
No, it's just for ease of circulation for a vehicle in and out with a sort of a one-way loop as opposed to a dead end.
Okay.
I'd say I, I agree with, with John here that I, I do hear you Nancy about that feature, but where the parking lot is already short two spots. It seems like probably the parking lot should just meet the standard and then features build on top of that. And if, and if we can get the number of spots out of it that are needed by deleting the feature that's not necessary, that seems logical.
John?
About the parking lot there. What kind of impact does that have on the fire truck? I know there has to be a certain amount of movement and stuff like that. Would that impact, you know, making it a single access?
Yeah, David, we actually can, we actually looked at this. And I will tell you that we are totally in favor of this drive-through based upon the narrowness of the parking space and the turning radius that we have there. The other issue is that we are dealing with a very, very big issue concerning fire department access to the buildings. And you know, the idea of getting a ladder truck and stacking other vehicles in there is just not going to happen if we can't actually access from either direction with either an engine or an aerial truck or, and an aerial truck. So you know, the idea of us having to back out into a road is not safe. We are, and I understand the idea concerning crash issues, et cetera, with, with, is what Mr. DeLeo is saying. But the turning templates that they have provided show it's, it's tight to begin with. But it is usable by the fire department. And to, to, you know, to, to not allow us to be able to drive through like that, it becomes a big issue.
John?
John?
Mike, I mean, if, if it was only the one entrance, that entrance could be widened out because you could move the parking places to the west, which would give you more room to maneuver as you come in. I mean, backing out, I mean, you're going to be backing out onto Oriole Way for the other project. I mean, probably a little easier.
Yeah, Oriole Way is actually a private road. It's not really a city road. So you know, when we're dealing with, you know, traffic, et cetera, on Foster Street. And there isn't that much traffic on Foster Street. I understand that. But we just, we just like the idea of being able to drive through. You know, widening the entrance, et cetera, may be doable. I'd have to see it on paper as far as how the turning template is going to allow for backing in, backing out as well as driving in. And what we're going to have available for, you know, an aerial and an engine. Looking at what we have, if you look at the, at the four units, we would be driving that truck as close to the entrance or to the, the two handicap parking spaces as possible in order to access that back building. So actually, you know, we're not going to have that much space to get another vehicle in there if we need to get it in there. So.
It kind of sounds like, you know, should this whole project be reconfigured? I mean, if, if you have that much problem maneuvering fire trucks in there, should we go forward with the way this is designed?
Well, let me, let me comment on that. This is a preliminary and we're not today making any judgments on the adequacy of, of the application. Just whether all the data that should be there is there, whether the data is any good or not. But certainly the applicants hearing our discussion should take these things seriously.
I have another question, John.
Yeah, I, I, I have a couple of comments about this and then some other questions too. I don't know whether you want me to go through them all. I have to say that relative to the two curb cuts, which is something I, I really hadn't thought about since the TRT basically had recommended that be one-way and all that. You know, if, if these were curb cuts on High Street, I would truly understand the idea that, that we don't want to have more than one. Personally, I'm all that concerned about having two curb cuts. At the same time, I am a little concerned or somewhat concerned about the idea that, you know, this site or this phase is two parking spaces short while the other one is two parking spaces high. That's all well and good. I understand that might be shared or whatever. I don't know that there's a lot, any kind of reasonable access though, be, you know, to, to make use of those parking spaces that are in the other phase. So I have some questions along those lines. You know, especially if, as they said at one point, these two phases might be considerably would be sold off on a line. It would be sold off separately. So, so that's my comment on the, on the two, two curb cuts. I am, I'm a little confused though, when I look at the drawings and so forth that you have. I see different end of parking lot treatments, especially I think for the other, for the other phase. You know, they basically are just from one sheet to another, they're different. The auto, the auto turn sketch has a little different, you know, configuration than, than this one, for example. And I, so I guess I, what I'm wondering is which one is the right one in terms of what the end of the, end of the parking lot actually looks like? So.
So I, I can answer that one. In the prior submittal that we had made for the TRT meeting review, if you look at this plan here, especially associated with the 29 unit building. The plan had more parking. It also had a quite sizable area. The dumpster was about in this location. There was a big turnaround here. There were some parking spaces over here and a fair amount of retaining walls as part of that. So that plan that you had seen is part of the original submittal that we made to go to the TRT meeting. When we responded to the TRT comments, we had established a revised plan that took away the parking that was along this area of Oriole Way. And we reconfigured this end because we had still excess parking than what was allowed or required for senior housing at 1.2 spaces per unit. So we pulled everything back, made it much more compact in this upper end here and sort of pulled everything to the east, if you will, for that. Then on pay on the ones for the market rate apartments, we responded to the request to have one way in and one way out. So we narrowed this down, added some more parking on this one and actually converted the dumpster, which was on this end here to two tote locations fenced in here and here for each of the two buildings. And we pulled in the retaining wall to reduce the amount of exposed wall that's along the face of this ravine. So we pulled everything kind of towards Foster Street. We added some parking in this area here. And we were able to add parking based on that configuration, but we were at 34 spaces as opposed to 36.
Okay, so a little too short on, on whatever phase we're seeing here now, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that was why we had to extra on the other things.
Okay. I guess, you know, I guess I would feel better about the shared spacing because I think the, the, the shared space thing is kind of a, it's not very realistic given the layout of these two phases and how you could physically get from one to the other if you were, you know, pedestrian or, you know, you wanted to go get your car or whatever. I would be, feel a lot better about that if you could come up with some sort of argument discussion. Argument discussions, some data or whatever that really show that the parking requirement. Is excessive. In the sense that you really don't necessarily need, you know, the, whatever number it is, and you can really get by with that lower number. And I think you could do that. But I, and I personally, I would just feel better about it if you did something like that. And again, that's for the, for the final. I would ask Mike if with respect to the circulation patterns that we see now. And I've already heard you on, on this particular phase. What about the other phase? You're good with that? Mike?
The other phase, basically. Like says, that's, we'd be pulling in there. Of course, backing out onto Oriole Way, a private way is really not a big deal. And we've got more than enough room and that length of parking lot to actually get two trucks in there either back to back or side to side. It's just a bigger parking lot.
Okay.
On, on, on the 29 unit.
So you're reasonably okay with, with both phases though, from a, from a fire truck perspective?
Correct.
Okay.
I just, I just chime in for a second. I don't, I don't want the. The, the circulation on the lower phase to, to get, change subject again before I get to chime in. I, I don't have a. A marketing developer construction reason why I'd prefer one over the other. So I'm, I know I need to satisfy the board. I need to satisfy the fire chief. So. I, I don't have a third. Ulterior motive where it should be one way or the other for me. I'm happy to do it either way. It probably would cost a little less with one entrance, but I don't know if that works for fire safety. I will say all the buildings are sprinkled and all of them have stand pipes. So there is that as well. But I'm, I'm, I'm very open to looking at it either way. I don't have my own agenda on that.
Yeah, I can, I, what I will do is knowing that the discussion concerning this, I can run this by the chief tomorrow. And start the process, the discussion with him and we'll get back to you on that. I, we'll, we'll work on it. So.
If there's more discussion on the parking lot and so forth, I would say go ahead and have, I have some questions about drainage and so forth, but. But if there's any other questions about the parking lot, you know, ask away so that we, you know, we're done with that part.
John DeLeo.
Specifically the parking lot, but. I, I would, on your traffic impact study, Kevin, on the vehicle site distance on page five. Okay, you're using the wrong standards. You're using MDOT site distance. City of Ellsworth has their own site distance criteria.
I'll let Nancy speak to that one.
We will follow up with the traffic engineer on that. I was not aware that there was an error in that.
Is the city of Ellsworth more stringent than, than the state?
Yes, it is. Basically, where you're in a 25 zone, the, the state standard is 200 feet. The city standard is, is 10 feet per mile per hour for, for any speed zone. So basically you, you're talking about instead of 200 feet site distance required, you're talking about 250. Because I also knows on the, on the, on the little spreadsheet chart on page six, you know, wherever it, it gives us site distances. But there's, you know, three notes that say, well, some of the site distance may be obstructed by vegetation, by limbs. You know, I had a question for, for Janet. She wasn't really sure, but you know, when were these site distance done? Were these site distance done in the middle of winter when there's no leaves on the trees? You know, were these branches close to the ground? So when they get leafed out. Is that going to drastically reduce the site distance? It talks about, you know, on Foster Street that the limbs are on the adjoining property of 56 Foster Street. And, you know, mentions that some of the, you know, some of these trees, the shrubbery should be cut. But if, if it's on somebody else's property, you know, would you be able to do that? You know, I think you'd need to. Take a look again at the site distance and, and what exactly has got to be done to, to meet the city standards.
You talked about removing two maple trees to, I think it were maple trees to, you know, make the site distance better. Where, where exactly are those on this drawing?
I believe that the trees are being, that he's referring to are actually on the other end of Oriole Way. Up by Oriole Way Apartments. But I will follow up with Mr. Bray both on both of those comments about the specifics of the clearing. And the site distance measurements based on the town standards, the city standards.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have, I have drainage stuff. After your parking lot stuff.
Okay, we'll go with the drain. It's.
Okay, full disclosure, I am also on the. I'm a board member of the Housing Authority, although I'm not here representing them or anything like that, but I just, in the spirit of full disclosure, I'll tell you that. Is it my understanding or is my understanding correct that there will actually, or is being a peer review done? At the behest of the city on all of the drainage plans and so forth?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay, and that'll be presumably be available by the time you get to the, the final thing, right?
And that's what the notes for the, this meeting indicated.
Okay, there's a, there's a drain pipe. That, you know, a culvert near the end of Oriole Way that just come, you know, goes across and it empties water. To that, I guess, west side. And that, that, the end of that drain pipe is on other people's property. Is that correct?
And I'm not exactly following where you're saying.
Where the Quonza hut thing is.
So there is. If you look here on this plan. There's a cross culvert here under Oriole Way. Is that the one that you're talking about?
I don't know. It has, it has an outflow on the, you know, on that map on the left side of Oriole Way. And it actually, I think, has actual running water in it. And my question is. You know, what happens to that culvert? What happens to the water that's in that culvert? Is it captured by you guys? You know, or what? Because some, in some of the instances, you basically said that there was existing. You know, some existing water that, that really you weren't going to, to mess around with because it wasn't within the project and all that. And I was just wondering whether that particular culvert water. Was within your purview? Were you, were you doing with it, something with it or not?
So with regard to this specific culvert that's under Oriole Way.
Yeah, I see it.
If you, if you recall Oriole Way sits a little bit higher than the backside of the shopping center site.
Yeah.
So the culvert was put in to make sure that this didn't impound anything that was coming off. Surface wise and going through the property from the backside of the shopping center. So that culvert will remain as it is. And if you look here on this plan, you'll see that we are adding some riprap at the outlet area. And then we're diverting that flow right along the edge of the property. These are stone check dams. And it will come down and come back right into where originally. Surface wise along the edge of the property and then down into the ravine area. So the other line that crosses through the site is one that comes from the backside of the shopping center. There's a fairly sizable structure just off the backside of the Shaw's building. There's a storm drain line. It actually splits, part of it goes down towards Foster Street. And the other part of it comes down to a structure following that pink line. There's a, there's actually a catch basin right where my cursor is. It's in the property. Then it goes down and continues along. Right now, this is the orientation of that pipe goes along and discharges down in the ravine.
Yeah.
So that line, that storm drain line will remain. We will convert the catch basin cover on this to a solid drain manhole. And raise it up to the elevation of the parking area. But we're not discharging any of our storm water into that line. That line will continue to flow as it does. And this cross culvert will continue to flow along the edge and then get down to where it originally went out into the ravine. So. This and this will flow just as they had originally through the site and down to the lower end of the property. Everything that we're proposing to do are grassed under drain soil filter. All of the drain lines that go around the building. This grassed under drain soil filter, all of the discharges from that connect right here. And then they go to that line that goes, as I described, down through phase two and connects into the storm drain system for Foster Street.
Okay, run your cursor if you would on Oriole down towards Foster. There you go.
I'm here.
Yeah. Okay, so where, where that, the two purple lines kind of wide off on the right hand side. What you're saying is that that one, the one that goes towards Foster connects in under Foster to the existing sewer line? Is that? What happens to that one?
So this one is already, these are all already in the ground.
Right, right.
So these all connect and they were put in when Foster Street went in.
Okay.
Um, this one actually I think tied into an existing one that was already in Foster. And this is that line that comes back from the backside of the shopping.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's on an open sewer, like an open trench or anything. That's a, that's a pipe the whole way, right?
That's all closed piping and catch basins and storm drains.
Okay, what, go, go back up there to those retention ponds if you would. Or retention areas. I guess the question I have with those and, and, and is that, you know, how. Based on your calculations and so forth, you know, those are basically detention ponds that get, that catch water and then release it slowly, correct?
So they're actually grassed under drain soil filters.
Okay.
That have additional storage capacity above what's called the channel protection volume.
Okay.
So basically these under drains that are in here.
Yep.
Are in the media, about 18 inches of media.
Okay.
Is in the bottom of this pond and it's grassed.
Okay.
So that is when, when a typical smaller rain event happens. One off will enter into that area and it will filter down through the media and discharge through the. Under drain to outlet, you know, to the site.
Okay.
When a larger storm event happens, water will continue to fill up on the surface.
Yep.
And it will not be able to discharge until there's 18 inches of depth of water. In the surface of this BMP. When there's a storm beyond that, there's additional capacity such that it will continue to flow out. But there's an outlet control structure right here in this structure. That'll, that controls how much water is coming out of that BMP. In an overflow situation, there's another structure here. That catches anything that would come up and meet the capacity of the pond and that again goes down into the system and out.
When, when it goes down to the system, it goes down into the other pond? Is that where it goes?
It goes down into that pipe that goes down into the Foster Street system.
Okay, so what happens, uh, like late winter, early spring, when you have snow cover that, that's very, you know, that freezes on top. And so your runoff coefficient goes to like one or something. Is there a chance of this whole thing, you know, kind of overflowing and causing some, wreaking some havoc downstream?
So basically this system is designed to be able to discharge slowly over a 24 to 48 hour period. When it is in a typical small rain event. When you get a larger rain event, then these systems take over and it's more of a traditional. Detention pond design, if you will, that has the storage that the outlet control structure itself. Takes care of all of the flow that would come out here in a normal sort of. Low, low rain shower event, like in the summertime, you'll see maybe some standing water here. But it's typically in the media and drains out slowly through that six inch. But when you get into the larger storm events or a, you know, a spring rain or something like that, you will see water in there for a while. And then it will be dissipating out through that outlet control structure.
I guess what I'd like to see is some sort of assurance that if, you know, if, if you had a situation where you had snow. And then a freezing surface so that, you know, it can't really percolate in very easily. You know, is there enough capacity in, in your system to take care of that without spilling out? Does that make sense?
And all of, all of the system components are in the stormwater model. And we have the ability to model sort of any storm event, if you will, 100 year event, 500 year event, that type of thing. And so we can provide additional data, if you like, to show the higher storm event. But we've designed it based on the criteria that's in the ordinance that establishes basically two types of storms. There's a, a 2.7 inch. 5.4 and that's the criteria that needs to be met for any type of stormwater facility. And we'll tell you that the. If you look at the model data, the rate of flow, the volume that is coming out of those under drains. Is quite small in comparison to what would be coming out of the pipe. So in a situation where your under drain isn't a factor. You still have your capacity in those pipes because that is the, sort of the driving force of that.
But I, I guess in the, in the peer review, and I still commented to Jana, Jana or whoever. In the peer review, I'd still like to see something about a finding relative to absolute worst case scenario relative to runoff and, and. You know, runoff coefficients that are really quite high relative to, that occur oftentimes in late winter, early spring. So I understand what you're saying. Nancy, but I would still like to see the, the. The peer review address those things.
Sure.
So I think Nancy, it's a good, it's a good point. Is there, let me put the question another way. Is there anything about the system as designed? That operates less efficiently under winter conditions?
Typically, these types of systems are not modeled any differently for year round conditions. You don't typically see an issue with them. These are installed commonly throughout the entire state. And the media itself, because it does drain, still does have some capacity even in the frozen ground conditions.
Are there any special maintenance protocols we need to observe to make sure that the structures don't get jammed up, clogged up? Is there anything particular about that that we're going to need to make sure of on site so that the concern that he's talking about? Doesn't come up due to lack of. Maintenance for, let's say.
There is a full inspection and maintenance plan that has been prepared for this site. That is very specific to the types of BMPs that are shown on the site that was submitted and is in the application materials. And I'm going to assume that the peer review will be taking a look at that as well. And this, the. Reports and requirements for the inspection and maintenance are based specifically. On what the DEP requires under the chapter 500 standards for these types of BMPs. So there's spring inspections. There's making sure that the grass is only periodically mowed, that it's not kept in sort of a mowed lawn type area. Collection of any debris or anything like that needs to be checked annually, twice annually for those types of things. So there is a program that's set forth. It's in the application materials we filed and it's very specific to this site.
Okay.
Let me just close by saying that, you know, one of the, one of the real problems that, that, that the community I think sees with these developments is the. You know, the, the severe drainage problems that occurred over on Washington and so forth. And they, there are, I think, I, in all likelihood, they're afraid of the same sort of things that are happening inside. And it, and it's a winter kind of issue because when it starts to, you know, wash out over the surface down on Water Street, that freezes very, very quickly. And it's a, it becomes a really terrible intersection. So, you know, therein lies the, the extra concern about that.
And we've, we've spent a lot of time talking to the director of the Housing Authority. And we've spent a lot of time talking to the Director of the Housing Authority.
Right, I know that.
Redesigning, I think we're spending probably 50 to 80K above what maybe the strictest ordinance would require. And we want to, we want to be good neighbors, we want to do it right. So I don't want to go to all this work and then have it not work as designed. So it's been very, very important to me that we do all this due diligence and.
I know, and I think, I think Dwayne is basically happy with the inclusion that he has had, which is a really good thing. It speaks well of you.
I have a question about the Foster Street drain pipe. And I don't know if this is for Nancy or Jan or Dwight, but I think, I think what I heard is when it was investigated, at least at the outlet end, it was found to be 18-inch. Is 18-inch all the way up the hill?
No, the GIS database had information, most of the piping in sort of the lower end of Foster Street is actually 15-inch. But the GIS database had shown that, that interconnection, there was one link in that that was actually on Water Street that was between the outlet at 15-inch on Foster and a cross culvert that was shown on Water that was 15. That segment between the two was showing on the GIS as six inches. And so that was, you couldn't model that, it would just, the model wouldn't, wouldn't work as far as you get error messages on the modeling. So we had in our model, we had assumed that that was not correct because there wasn't any visual evidence of, you know, catch basins with water coming out the top of them, that type of thing. We had assumed that it was a 15-inch in that segment. So Public Works went out and actually did a little bit more investigating with some cameras down in that location at the intersection. And what they discovered was that the 15-inch system down at the end of Foster Street does not go down to that culvert that they were originally looking at, at Water Street. But actually, there is a 18-inch culvert that is the direct discharge from the end of Foster Street that goes down to the water. So we don't have that six-inch segment, it is actually an 18-inch segment. But the rest of it going upstream is 15 and there are some 12s as well. Most of those are cross culverts, are cross connections between basins in the system. So where we tie.
Are proposing as part of the development, some new piping along Foster Street? Or is it not needed now?
That is correct, there were two areas that needed to have additional piping. One was the area where the six-inch had been identified, which that is no longer necessary.
Okay.
Because there is an 18-inch that.
Right, right, okay.
So there is a segment that, where we are tying in, we're running a new 15-inch line to connect into the system in Foster Street and it's along the edge of Foster Street. It appears that there, that segment along the frontage, it's actually a six-inch line that's probably an underdrain, I would suspect, as opposed to a formal storm drain in that section. So we are running a new line from the connection point at the Foster Street section up the edge of Foster Street and into the site.
So the developer is providing that at their cost in order to make this happen, right?
That is correct.
I'm good.
Anyone else have questions? In that case, let me open this up to a public hearing. Does anyone out there wish to ask questions, make comments, and have any come in?
I don't have any, but you might want to wait like maybe a minute. Dwight, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
I'm all set.
Just give people like an extra minute. Hey Nancy, do you mind unsharing your screen? I can't figure out how to kind of turn that off unless you can tell me how to shut that off.
I'll take care of that. Oh, that's like magic.
Thank you.
David, yes. Oh, you're muted. David, you're muted.
How's that, better?
Much better.
Okay, at the October meeting, the senior housing was identified as 55 and older. And Kevin, I think you said at the beginning of the meeting, you said it was 63 and older, which, which number is it?
It's actually 62 and over and that is, that is because there are a couple of different financing schemes the Maine State Housing Authority uses. Basically, when HUD money is involved, it goes, HUD has a different definition of senior than the state. So HUD money's involved, so it becomes 62 plus.
Thank you.
John, I don't have any public.
Nothing, okay, and then I will close the public hearing. Now, this is a preliminary, so if there are no further questions, then we can proceed to make a determination if this is complete or not. Let me go down quickly, the submission material requirements. Application form, write title of interest, schedule of construction, cost, base plan, which as far as I can tell, everything is here. Existing and proposed conditions, existing site conditions, proposed site conditions. Is there any sign that's proposed? Is there any sign that's proposed?
Can you answer that one?
Oh, sorry, yeah, no, not at this time. We may have some entrance signs saying, you know, once we name the project, but not at this time.
Okay, well, if it happens before the final, just show them on that.
Will do.
Lighting plan. Traffic, yeah, parking, yes. Bike and pedestrian, see any stormwater, wastewater, drinking water. Groundwater impact analysis. Okay, I don't. I'm not, I'm not seeing things that are missing, but you know, I could be blind. Oh, I, I do have a question, which is not strictly planning board matter, but what provisions have been made for handicap access in these buildings?
All of the buildings are ADA accessible. All of the buildings have ADA parking adjacent to the accessible entry points. And the site has been designed in accordance with the Maine State Housing Authority requirements in order to meet the ADA standards, both for parking, access to the building and then also in any of the walkways, a maximum of 5% grade for that. So they are designed, both phases are designed to be accessible fully.
The upper floors are also handicapped accessible.
In the, in the 29-unit building, there's an elevator. On the 12-unit market rate buildings, there is no elevator, so the accessible units are on the main level.
And on the senior housing, then are there places of refuge or the stairways?
I'd have to ask the architect that, I'm not sure, Kevin, if you know the answer to that. I would assume that they do, but I'd have to ask the architect.
Okay, my curiosity. Any other comments or questions?
John?
Yes.
I just wanted to make the board aware of just a couple of things that we spoke with the applicant about. They're in the midst of preparing pre and post-development drainage diagrams that will show the colors showing, you know, where the, where the water is flowing before development and where it's flowing after development. Once we get that, obviously, it'll go to the board, it will also be part of the materials that will be given for the peer review. This also triggers a permit from the DEP for stormwater. So Nancy, it's my understanding that you guys are filing that application and you'll give us documentation of that filing as part of the final?
Yeah, you'll receive a municipal copy of the application materials.
Okay, and then the last thing was, there was some talk about easement language. So they're in the process of preparing easement language for a utility easement that would be given to the water department for valves on Oriole Way as well as preparing an easement for cross-connection and maintenance of Oriole Way, considering it goes through the two split properties right now. So that's something that will be given for the final plan as well. I just wanted to make you aware of those items that will be coming in for final plan.
John, the other thing is that we, the fire department has not submitted its letter yet for the applicant. As soon as I get the discussion with the chief over with, depending on the parking issue and the drive-through, we'll probably issue that. The other thing is I have narrative for Nancy to put on the final plan on the, both utility plans for the 29 unit and the 12 to 12 units for the stand pipes that are going to go in, so that those are actually on the plan. And I'll get that to her, so it's in a, it's in a Word document, so you can copy and paste. How's that?
Now, does anyone here remember where the term paste came from and copy and paste? You used to literally have a line of text or whatever and paste it on the, on the document. And after that, it went to typesetting or photography and typesetting.
It's only if you made mistakes, John.
No, no, because it was part of the layout process. But you would take your detail and literally glue it down. Little bit of publishing history. So has anyone wished to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept a preliminary plan review for a major use site development plan and major subdivision entitled Foster Street Apartments and so forth in terms of it being complete.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
That's embarrassing.
Any discussion? In that case, all in favor, please? Okay, well, I don't see any opposed, so very good. Does this mean that we can go home soon? Well, we are home, but.
Thank you Nancy and Kevin for answering my questions.
So is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of German, please?
Praise the Lord.